We are good to go.
Okay, well, welcome. I call the January 10th special meeting of the Equity Board to order at 6:08 PM. And due to the hybrid format of today's meeting, I'd like to start by providing some guidelines. Well, this is a reminder that the meeting is being recorded. I do not believe we're having live Spanish interpretation today, but I think we should still speak clearly and slowly. And state our names each time before speaking. If applicable, mute your microphone when speaking. If having technical issues, try joining by using a different device or use the call-in information on the meeting invitation. And with that, we will begin by taking roll call of those board members in attendance.
Amazing. Christina Albonse.
I'm here.
Awesome. Lucrecia Choto.
I'm in attendance.
Thank you. Tony Curry.
I'm here.
Awesome. Varnika Doka is not in attendance yet. Shay Fleming has an excused absence, as does Lorna Gilmore has an excused absence. Karthik Kashina. Ray Manahan.
Here, good evening.
Priti Modi Pan.
Here.
And Kelly Ma is absent unexcused currently. Correct? And I'm here. I'm the only member of the staff here tonight. Dale Markin, Creme Assistant to the City Administrator.
Great. And now we will move into public comments. Their public comments are an important part of the public process, and we take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. And so I believe we've got a couple of members of the public joining us today. Dale, was there anyone else who indicated public comment?
No one else. The Bahais of Issaquah reached out to let us know that Ted would be in attendance tonight. And so that is our one aforementioned speaker.
Would you like to join us in public comments?
I might too. And Saba, Yvina is here with me. And just take a moment. But public comment is invitation of the Bahais of Issaquah to the Equity Board to see if one of you would like to be the speaker or facilitator at our community building social on February 3rd, as we're looking forward to. As we've had three or four times with that quarterly for the last year, kind of. Lucrecia and Christina and Ray have been able to attend before, and I know others are interested. And it's just been a great collaboration, kind of, because this has been a great forum, a community forum, for conversation about initiatives and topics, conversations supporting community building, which we're all, we all in favor. We get a real variety of people. And so we thought that a great conversation would be about what is the Equity Board here in Issaquah? That would be the conversation. And anywhere you want to take it, but perhaps how can the community support the Equity Board? Conversation, you know, and how it goes, it's just a 30-minute or kind of a conversation with that topic. And then we have opportunity for art and music, and we have, you know, dinner, food. So it starts at 5 o'clock, and it can go as long as anybody wants to, 7:00, 8:00. But everybody enjoys kind of getting to know each other. We've got a real variety of people, people from other countries that are residents of Issaquah, kind of, communities. Sometimes people from neighboring communities even, stuff like that. So no pressure, no obligation or anything, but if anyone would like to, or any two of you would like to, to kind of make that sort of conversation, this conversation starter and information sharing about the Equity Board. I think that would be really interesting. So let us know any way you would like. I mean, I'm not sure how you want to manage that, but individually or collectively, email that that was sent to you.
Yep.
And it's not this time, maybe it's another time. So, thank you very much.
We have, of course, all invited. Two to either talk or, you know, lead the discussion, but please all be invited.
Yeah, as always. In fact, we haven't sent out the invitation yet because we want to know, you know, what the topic is going to be and whether we make that our topic when we send out the invitation. We'll say, we say Equity Board, and you, that kind of thing, will be the conversation topic. And we'll share that with all members because everybody can find it. And members of the city staff, and even the mayor, I saw mayor yesterday. I'm going to invite her again, of course. She'd like to join us. Any questions, thoughts?
No, just to add, this is Ray. I think several of us, let's see, Lucrecia and Priti and I, and I can't remember if anybody else has attended one of their sessions. Oh, I thought you had, I'm sorry. I advocate for it. It's a great way for community building, and the Bahais are so open to discussion and the way they structure their meetings with just some really good conversations. And there's youth present, which is always a good target for the Equity Board. It's always good. I don't want to monopolize a meeting because I seem to be telling them a lot. I'm happy to go, and if anybody above my board of fellow board members would like to join me, I encourage it. You can come in.
So I'm going to go ahead and jump in simply because I don't know if you can see the hands being raised because both Tony and I have had our hands raised before Ray even spoke.
Oh, sorry, I'm just not seeing it.
We can, we can in fact see them. So I think it was just Ray's passion jumping in. So apologies on that. And yeah, let's keep, I know we can't respond directly to Ted in this moment, but we can talk about this briefly. We can't move it to other business. There is no other business of a special meeting. So if there are quick thoughts before we move on, that should be fine. Lucrecia and Tony, I also did not see whose hands were up first, so I will have to defer to you.
Ladies first, I presume you had your hand raised first anyway.
Yeah, and then, and then I don't know if you've ever had this happen, but like your hand being raised times out, so mine timed out. It could be the second. I don't know. The system is so wacky. Anyway, so what I wanted to say is that I am interested in taking up this invitation once again, unless there are other people who have not attended who would like to go. I think that so long as we keep it at four and under, we would be not in quorum or whatever the concern is. And like Ray, I can't emphasize enough the importance of making ourselves available to these meetings because there are a variety of people who attend. And I just think it's a good way for us to connect directly with the community. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Lucrecia. Tony?
I was just going to say I would love to attend and would love to actually have a presence. This will be my first meeting, actually going there, but I'm looking forward to it. And so I think Ted and Saba, I think I have your emails in my inbox somewhere. I believe so. But if you could, if you don't mind passing that off to Dale to email us, that would be great.
Tony, just so you know, at least on our end, you're coming in rather quiet, but we did hear all of that, and it sounds good. As a next step, I will follow up with at least the three of you to coordinate our next steps, and we'll be in touch.
Sounds good.
Wonderful. And again, it's neighbors and friends and colleagues that you could bring along, you know, kids included. Thanks again very much.
Tony, you still, unlike Lucrecia, you still have your hand up. It has not timed out on you. Do you have another?
I don't.
It is, it is. It's in fact blinking to let us know that we did not see your hand.
I should know better than that. There we go.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and now we'll move on, and Kelly is making it just in time, from Kelly, to the approval of minutes. So I will give you all a minute or two to peruse the minutes that are in the board packet and then move to make a motion to approve in a moment. So let's take a moment to review.
I have a motion to approve, but can I add a comment? This is Ray, as I approve is allowed.
You need a second first, and then we can discuss.
My second?
Great. You can open it for discussion.
Open for discussion here.
Okay. If you recall, those of you who were here at the January meeting, there was one topic that I was particularly keen on, which was we as Equity Board members need to take an opportunity to get to know one another just a little bit better. I think sharing our backgrounds helps us to understand one another. I had a great opportunity to spend some time with Kelly, and it allowed for us to get to know one another just a little bit better and understand where we come from, from our perspective. What brought us here? What was our catalyst? What made us want to be part of the Equity Board? Something from past that we want to share with one another, or maybe even current things that are happening that we want to bring forward. Just an opportunity to share. And we don't seem to do that at meetings because we have, we're filled with other topics. But if that's something that we can just say, hey, can we take five minutes? Because one or two or three of us had talked about something that I think would be worthy to present to the board. I think that might, might benefit all of us. Just a comment there.
Nothing I love more than an agenda that is oddly responsive to a comment in the moment. So, yep, that sounds good.
Yeah, Lucrecia.
Lucrecia, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, please, please, please speak.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear anybody call me. So kind of going back a little bit to the minutes. I had, if this has already been discussed and I missed it at some point, just let me know. But does anybody know what's going on with Helen Kabenge? Because she hasn't been in a meeting for a while now.
Yeah, Helen, both Helen and Nima have stepped away from the board. And so, yeah, they, they will not be in attendance in our upcoming meetings. We have an opportunity potentially to fill Nima's seat with another member, another youth member, both one that we, between now and February 15th, with someone that we've already interviewed, but potentially reopening that. Also, as you know, we'll have some openings coming up. As we look at our work plan, you'll remember that there will be some more recruitment for Equity Board seats, for anyone, for seats that are vacant, that'll come a little bit later in the winter, early spring, too. So.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so I think between what I heard from Ray and Lucrecia, there's not necessarily an addendum to the minutes. Right? So, and Ray, in response to your comment, there is this January agenda items consideration that kind of mentions equity to tribute to Kelly. So I guess we could add your name there as well.
Sure.
Okay, and let's see. With those noted edits, we can proceed to consider the minutes approved. Do I need a second?
Nope. As long as, I guess, does anyone object to the addition of Ray in that section of the minutes?
Okay. Okay. Let's see, so then, coming back to the agenda here. It was like a responsive to Ray's comment and Kelly's comment. Our first substantive agenda topic is the meeting company closing practice. And I believe Kelly is going to...
I'm going to, I'll, I'll, I'll give this an introduction here. So one of the, one of the discussion points that are meeting last year now, last month, was around this opportunity for connection that, you know, this, this board, what I heard this board say is that you value that connection, you see it as aligned to your equity work, and that while other boards don't necessarily make time for that connection at every meeting, this board is, is different. You see that yourselves as wanting to model the type of leadership and engagement you seek to see. And so I had a chance to touch base with a number of board members following up from our December meeting and wanted to propose a new way of opening and closing our meetings moving forward, leaving some time for connection. And so what we're going to try on tonight, and we'll take feedback on this after we do it, but is a bit of a round robin opportunity to answer a prompting question for us to ground ourselves in this particular moment together in this meeting tonight. And we don't right now have a closing practice that we're going to try on quite yet, but that's something that we'd like to explore. And so if, if this is something that fits for this group, we'll start building it into our agendas every month. And so definitely would be open after we do it for both feedback in the moment, but also feedback over email or phone call or text message afterwards. And so the question I'm going to offer up tonight, and we'll give everyone a chance to think about it for a bit and jot thoughts down. Well, actually, would you like to offer the question?
You were going to bounce it off. You two were going to...
Yeah, and your question was perfect.
What you love or what joy?
I think, I think what you love, I think, yeah, we'll let Kelly...
I threw this out, and that is because I've done it in other scenarios. And this is a little different, but it is, why do you love equity work?
So I'd invite everyone to take a minute or two. Why do you love equity work? Why do you love being in work for equity? Think about it, and we'll open it up for everyone to contribute. But I want to allow our processors some time, and that might be some good feedback for us, too, as moving forward, we might want to have the question for folks to come prepared. Already, already iterating here, but take a couple of moments to think, and we'll open it up for everyone to contribute, a chance to connect and to ground ourselves in our meeting today. And when folks are ready, if you could just give a thumbs up, and that way I'll have just a general sense where we're at. Okay. Take about 20 more seconds. Oh, Tony, with the different types of thumbs. I love it. All the thumbs. Awesome. Okay, I would invite us to open up to share. And I'll just say on the front end, this is meant to be an opportunity, not to be perfect, but to be, but to connect with each other. So. As you wish.
Awesome. 15 years ago, I didn't even know what equity was, and racial equity was not needed. You know, my mind, I mean, I think I was your average white, upper-middle-class white woman. I had the opportunity to learn really rapidly, sometimes painfully, that there was a whole nother universe out there, that there was a racial universe, and then multiple racial universes and poverty universes, and all these different ways that people were experiencing what I thought was one way of experiencing the world. It was an unbelievable journey for me, and I learned, I've learned and continue to learn all the time. I love the work because once I started learning, it made me realize that the way I learned, even though some of it was painful, most of it was great, was one-to-one with people, with people I knew who were willing to push me and talk to me and help me understand and love me no matter what, what I thought, because they thought I could learn. And so that's what I love about it.
Tony, you've got your hand up.
I do. Actually, if you don't mind, Kelly, I'd love to ask you a question about what you said. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm going to turn you up over here.
All right. How about now? Testing, testing, one, two, three, testing, one, two, three. All right, good. Okay, Kelly, I have a question for you, something that you mentioned, and thank you for sharing. And thank you for having the courage to say what you said. I mean, it's got to be kind of hard to say. But you mentioned that some of the things were painful for you. Would you mind? Would, would you be so open to share what was painful for you?
I didn't like being wrong, right? My belief system was wrong, right? What I was doing sometimes was wrong. And so it was painful because I had to get over the feeling that I was hurting people on purpose. And, right, that, you know, I wanted to say I didn't intend it, right? My intentions were good, right? So it was painful to realize I was doing this. That's...
Thank you. That was very introspective. Thank you. I guess I might as well go ahead and share. I hate awkward silences, so I'll go ahead and share. For, for me, for me, let me take my hand down. I should know better than that. You use this all the time at work. For me, it's, I guess, encompassing one word, hope. I mean, that's why I love equity, hope. I mean, for many years, being taught by parents that I grew up in what I like to call Civil Rights Headquarters. They were, they grew up in Montgomery, Alabama. They marched in the marches. They, they, they did all that, right? And then I turned 18, I joined the military, and I served. I served and served and served, and still miss it to this day. But what I, it's the hope, right? Because I was raised on equality. And before really learning, and that's the other word for me as far as equity work, why I love it, is because I'm, I'm learning. Like, I didn't know until really getting involved into the Equity Board when, when this was, came up in its inception. I didn't see equity as any different than equality. But I learned myself over something that my wife had shown me, that for us to have a more, a better society, that we need more than equality. It's no longer, equality has had its time. It's had its time. Not that it wasn't great. It's had its time. It's reached its goal. But now we need equity, meaning that, and we all know what equity means, right? So we all know what it means. But that to go forward, for us to have a better society, we need to have a more equitable society that works for everyone because equality is not enough. We all are not equal in terms of whether it be accessibility needs, in terms of income, in terms of socioeconomic status, whatever that happens to be, that we need, we need a more equitable society that really works for everyone. So that's what I love about equity, and that's why I really wanted to get more involved in it. For, in my other word, is service, is that I want to serve society. I dearly miss my time in the Army. I love, I loved my time there. I miss it. And, you know, I want to be able to serve my community. And then I hope and I pray that what we do here in the city of Issaquah somehow infects our sister cities, somehow infects the state, somehow infects the country, and somehow affects the world. And it was so inspiring to see the coalition from Japan who had come here, I think it was a couple of years ago now, that had come here, and they wanted to talk to members of the Equity Board because they were seeing some things in their country, which is more of a homogenous, usually more of a homogenous society, that they're seeing more, more of an integrated society, more immigration that's come over there. And they're seeing a need, and they reached out to us to not just inspire them, but help them out in terms of what they should be looking at, things they should be thinking about. And so it is that hope, it is that service, it is that, that love of our fellow, our fellow person that inspires me, why I want to keep moving with this. And I hope that we just all can work together and make this, I don't know, a, a much better city first, that works for everyone.
Thanks for sharing, Tony.
You're welcome.
Hey, like, it's a really good opportunity that there is even an Equity Board in Issaquah because there's so many things that we can do, like promote trans. It's not only about diversity. I think I've realized that over the past few years. It's also about like transportation and different communication methods, which is something I've definitely learned. And even, we had an MLK assembly yesterday in school, and we had the Ambassador Lulu come in and say that from hundreds of years ago, there's been like a lot of progress that's been made in terms of equity and racial diversity around the world, but it's still not enough. We're still not to the point where it's equal for everyone, and everyone has equal rights. So I think I just love the fact that we can make such changes within Issaquah, even though it's small compared to the rest of the world. I'm glad that we have this opportunity that I can participate in all these discussions and help housing for some people here, or transportation methods, and just make everyone's life feel more equal and like happier. I think that's one thing why I...
I'll go next. Yeah, for me, the equity work encourages me to be empathic, to be compassionate, to really listen deeply, be humble, and consider the question of belonging for every person around, which is very aligned with my intentions for my own practices around mindfulness. And that's, that's really what draws me to this work.
I can go next. I think what draws me to this work is it's, I think, the issue around fairness and social justice. And so I think even early on as a kid, I realized certain things weren't fair. And this explains why, like, issues of racism and white supremacy, so privilege, race, you know, discrimination, bias, all of those things kind of explain what happens. And so it's, there's a sort of like lens of truth that this brings the world for me to be able to see the world in this way and try to address.
Hmm, thanks.
Lucrecia.
Thank you. This is Lucrecia speaking. For me, equity, the equity work that I've done, I've done since I became an active person in the communities in which I have served. in the communities in which I have served. Um, I first started serving through a youth leadership group that introduced us to civic duty. And that was back in high school. And so I served in that capacity. In undergrad, I did the same. My, my thesis and graduate work was around the issue of equity, um, in terms of financial attainment and a financial literacy for our families, our immigrant families who come and sometimes are challenged, um, not only because of language, but because of education levels and what they can actually attain while they're here. And then, um, each community that I have lived in, um, I have always made it a point to get involved. Um, so even when I was in higher ed, I made sure that at the table, I asked questions that were uncomfortable, um, to ensure that we were using an equity lens to address the way that we admitted students, the way that scholarships were granted, those sorts of things. And they, those were things that were beyond my purview. I was in the City Abroad Office, but I always involved myself in the admissions process and in the processes that I felt could truly make an impact long term. Um, when I first started working at that particular institution, I think we had something ridiculous, like three percent people of color. And by the time I left, it was closer to fifteen percent, which is still a very, very low number. But if you take where it was to where, where it ended up being, um, I think that, um, some of the work, some of the unpopular work that I participated in made a difference. Um, and then, you know, just, and then I had my children. And I realized that not every child has, you know, access to the same starting points. And so I made sure to volunteer in agencies that, um, were addressing children who didn't have access to, um, child, um, what would you call that? Like, um, childcare, that was more than just childcare, but like a, an educational kind of environment. So I worked with that, um, with one of the oldest, like co-op preschools in Portland, Oregon. Hmm. And, um, so yeah, so basically this has just always been something that I have, um, felt a need to participate in. And then when I moved to Issaquah, um, it was right before, um, right before COVID, and so I didn't know anyone. And I started a small group to help students who were graduating at the time and who were going, heading into their senior year, um, to help them with, um, college counseling because I saw that need. Um, a lot of the kids were just very lost. So I started a support group, especially for Spanish speaking community. Um, because, you know, if they're disenfranchised on a regular day, COVID really threw in a wrench for them in terms of accessing information and understanding FAFSA and all the, the other things that are available to them. And so I joined, um, as a, oh Dale helped me with human services, what are they called? Commissioners.
Commissioners, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I was invited to apply, um, by several people who have lived in Issaquah longer, much longer than I had at the time. And so I did, and then I joined and, um, and then this idea was floated and about starting the Equity Board. And I jumped on it because I just, it's just second nature to me to be involved at that level. And, and here I am, you know, hoping that my grain of sand, for better or worse, um, makes people minimally think. Um, I, I'm not one to seek approval. Um, I'm one to just really be in the throes to ask questions. And I'm just really grateful to be here. And I think my term is up. So I will probably meet with you all, uh, a whopping three more times. So it's, um, it's gonna be bittersweet for sure to, to say goodbye in April, but, um, I feel that, you know, I, I have done what I set out to do and, and been a part of getting this group going and it's been really exciting. Thank you.
Hmm. Thanks, Lucretia.
Thanks. I'm happy to go next. Um, wow, it's great to listen to all of you. Um, I could be a little more precise with mine. I, I, I work for a nonprofit healthcare organization, very large one. And every three years, they're required to do what they call a community health needs assessment. And I was part of that group at Providence, which is also Swedish, part of that. But, um, it was really enlightening to have to, to take part in that because it was driven by data. You had to see exactly what was going on in your community. And what are you going to do to ease the way for people specifically around healthcare? And it's, um, and, and if you think about healthcare, it's one of those things that you absolutely need. You cannot get out of bed if you're sick and do your daily thing. So for, for individuals to just do their daily, to, to function on a daily basis, they needed to have access to healthcare in a timely, consistent manner. And that's what really drove me to it. I think that was foundationally how I got to more and more, um, tied into equity work. Then obviously being a, 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 a gay minority, um, social equity is always present for me. Um, depending on where I am physically, I certainly don't feel it here in this wonderful community that we live in. But if I travel, it's always in the back of my mind. So it's something that my husband and I are very aware of, um, when, when we're traveling. So that's always sitting there somewhere. Um, so, so, so health equity and social equity in regards of, that is what brought me here.
Okay, I think that's my turn. So for me, it's just because I want to understand different points of view. And I want to feel included and, and this is very important because also I can consider and, and learn from you guys and from all the community who is very diverse.
Thanks, Christina. I'm not technically an Equity Board member, but I'll share really briefly as well. Um, I think, uh, for me, I love being in Work for Equity because I think it is, it forces a foundational shift in the way that many people, um, in power, think about the world. Um, I have a background in K-12 education. That was the first work that I would say I formally did in pursuit of, of equity was working with my middle school students. Um, and it profoundly, I, there's a, there's a much longer, uh, story, but, uh, profoundly changed the way that I understood myself. I understood the choices my parents made, um, throughout my childhood to give me access to education that they didn't have. Um, and so after a period of time working in K-12 education and looking around and saying, where's the, where's the next place that I think as a white woman I can push? And I'm gonna have the ability to push for change. Um, and that was government, you know, it, it was, I was like, oh, that's a good place for me to go. Um, and I'm still learning. I'm still fairly new to government. Don't let this branded, you know, vest fool you. I've only worked for, the, the city of Issaquah is the only government I've worked for full time. I've only done that for just over two and a half years. And so I'm still learning exactly everything government does. But every single day, because I'm committed to a more equitable process, practice and outcomes, um, I, I get to push on a lot of people and try to make, um, us think differently as we make decisions, which there's nothing better than getting to be challenged, um, and challenging myself every day. So I'm really grateful, um, grateful for that. Yeah. Great. Well, we're gonna try something like this, if folks are open to it. It won't be this long. Um, this, we, we, I think when Kelly and I chatted and then Priti and I chatted, we wanted a question to really start off to ground us for the year. Um, but we'll, we'll try if folks are open. Um, I'll open up some space now to, for, for feedback and quick thoughts on, um, doing something like this at the start of our meetings, something to ground us maybe a little briefer instead of thirty-five minutes with, uh, but something that could ground us in a little bit of a different way than an ordinary public meeting. So I would open it up for input on that as a quick thought, um, or if folks want time to think, that's totally fine. Um, and we can, you can, you know where to find me, um, at any point. You had made a comment earlier about wanting.
Yeah, connections, I think is important for us if we can have that time. Oh, Lucretia, I spoke over her for a minute. Her hand was raised. Um, the, uh, the one-on-one times that we can have, I think. But I think allowing for this question to present itself in the beginning and maybe Dale, and a way to approach this is just assign us. You, Ray Manahan, are gonna be in charge of bringing up the question at the next meeting.
Yep.
And then, um, you know, Conde could be at the meeting after that. Um, and I'm happy to take that on for the meeting in, in February and throw out that question that would provoke some good thought and discussion in the group.
Great.
Round robin kind of thing.
Yeah, I love that. Lucretia.
I don't know the rules around this, but Dale, if you could ask the clerk, um, if you don't know the answer to this, but like, is there any way to have retreats either, either twice a year, once a year, three times a year for the board? So that we can get to know one another or, or even have, I know that in the, um, in the Human Services Commission, we got together at a restaurant in a very public setting on purpose to make sure that people knew that we weren't having like a meeting. Um, and that we weren't talking shop. And it was really important, I felt, for that group to have a meeting like that. But I don't know what the rules are about having a retreat. I think it would be very beneficial in terms of getting people to know one another and, and even in terms of like resources, like, I'm sure that every single person at this table brings a slew of resources. But I wouldn't know what those resources are if I needed to reach out into this community. Like, I, I have no idea what people could do to help. Like, if I had a question around health or whatever, right? Like Ray was saying. It's just a thought. Thank you.
Yeah, I can definitely explore that. And I know it's something that we do. So it's, it's a, there's no reason this, this group shouldn't be able to as well. Yeah. Any other? I, yeah.
Yeah, I really love that. And I would, um, I would be up for doing that regularly at future meetings.
Awesome.
Thank you for this.
I guess the question, which is a question for you to ask, is if anyone's opposed to us doing this again next month.
Okay, well, that's a good question. To us doing this again, um, next month.
Okay, great.
And if I can jump in for a quick second, um, I would like to offer my home up if people would feel more comfortable gathering at someone's house as opposed to a restaurant. I want to make that available. Just, you know, give me a heads up so I can vacuum or make sure.
I will, I will, as a follow-up on my end, I will follow up with the clerk and then Priti and I can connect also just where in the, everything flows into the work plan that we're gonna get to. We're in the work plan, it makes sense to do that. And potentially, I'll plant a seed that probably some sort of, at a, at a, maybe at a board transition point, um, there's probably a good opportunity to both, you know, potentially welcome new board members and celebrate the service of our current, any current members that aren't going to be coming back for another term. So, but we can look more into that. But yes, Lucretia, first and foremost, I will confirm with the clerk um, and find out this, the conditions, uh, that needs to be met for, for a retreat. So, can do. Okay. I have all the items today, so I don't know if I want to like stand up and leave the room and come back.
So I guess, but if anyone else has other comments about that, I think, um, I've been inviting you to reach out to Dale. All right. So then, um, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Equity Board Annual Report to the City Council and.
Great. So this is in, is in your packet, is not in your printed packet. So, um, I can share my screen here in a moment, um, for anyone that might need to be able to see this. I actually think ironically, the folks online probably have easier access to the report, um, than, I'm not sure that projecting my screen is gonna be a great help to the folks here in the room. Uh, but annually, the Equity Board presents a brief report on its business to our city council. That's part of your charter. Um, and the sort of ongoing, not every board and commission does that, only a small handful of them do. Uh, but as we're coming to the end of this calendar year and looking into the upcoming calendar year, uh, we've drafted, I drafted a, a letter here and asked for everyone to take a look at it. And so I would open it up to any feedback on the, on the report. It's fairly brief. Um, but want to make sure that this is reflective of what you all feel, um, you've engaged in over the course of the past year before we send it off to, uh, the city council to take a look. So I'm gonna pull it up here in a minute for that. Um, but also if anyone has additional thoughts, because you've already been thinking about it, feel free, uh, to chime in. Thanks for everyone's patience as I navigate, uh, the computer. Sorry for the whiplash. And I'll first put up here the, uh, English version, and then we can also scroll through the Spanish version as well.
Comment. This is great. The way you put the verbiage around the work that we did, it's like, if anybody comes asking, what did you guys done? I go, well, here, read this.
You got an official record. Yeah.
So, thank you.
Other folks have any questions or comments about, uh, um, report?
I think it's just grammar.
Great, lay it on me. You probably know better than I do.
I don't know if I read it wrong, but I think it's in the first paragraph.
Oh, of course it is. That's where all the.
It's like the third sentence, like the board consists of nine regular, three alternate, including Wiggly Youth Position and three alternates.
You are a wizard. You all, this is why we keep the young eyes here. Priti's also looking because we both looked at this and we both, neither of us.
We, yeah, that was like an edited sentence that didn't fully get.
It didn't fully get edited.
Thank you.
Noted. That sentence will be fixed. Old star. Tony.
Yeah, maybe it doesn't need it because if you put it in here, we're.
Yeah, maybe it doesn't need it because if you put it in here, would actually maybe you'd have to cut things out. But I feel like, I mean, the audience for this, for the letter, is it for the mayor as well as other city leadership, like the council as well?
Yes, it will. So it will go to the city council. Yes.
Feel free to veto. Well, it's just my thought, actually. I feel like it needs impacts, right? Like it says what we've done, what we've done throughout the year, but not in, it, it says a lot, but it, it seems to lack, okay, well, how did the Equity Board impact, let's say, Chief Swan's body worn camera policy? Like how, how were, how were we able to impact that to her and the decisions that she made based on those particular things? But I think then this will become a two-page letter. Or three, if you put in impacts, now that I think about it. Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I have a follow-up comment. I think that's a great suggestion. And I think when Dale and I were talking about this, I, or it was related to this, because I'm like, have we had an impact? And I think you had recapped to me how different city staff who presented their plans and, you know, got feedback from us, how, what their kind of, their perspective on it. I mean, if you, I guess that's putting a little bit more work on you, but if you're able to kind of summarize some of the, I don't know, like a testimonial or summary of the from their. Could be a great, your impact, at least fall into it.
Yeah. I can definitely, I can, I, I can ask staff to add it. I would be curious if we only get, you know, a handful of folks who are able to articulate, is that fine? Would you be interested in some for examples or, you know, I'm, I'm happy to do that. And maybe I'm not sure that we have, well, you know what? We can wait and I can bring it back in February with those edits in it.
I mean, if you're looking for specifics, those of us who were involved in some of those events like Black History Month, like I hosted that Pride Month. The, the feedback that we got from those who were there, the people that we got engaged, whether it be community leaders and the garage next door or students from the high school who were also on the panel. I don't know how detailed you want to get.
Secret survey?
They're, they, they had, we asked questions during the online event and I can't really document. Look at my notes, but it was just more an inquiry to the people who were there. Because that's us working to bring community members together on a topic that we feel is very adequate for. Pride Month.
I think this, this Kelly speaking, I think this is a great conversation because we can build this in to the process, right? So every time somebody presents to us their action for us, that would just is to tell us in a month or two, what they did or what was a challenge or an opportunity from it. Doesn't necessarily mean they're always going to do something, but they need to talk about how we impacted them.
Yep.
That's a fair trade.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think for timeliness, Dale, of this, depending upon when you wanted to publish it out to city leadership. I think that what Ray mentioned and what Kelly was just saying, and as well as Priti as well, that I think the verbatims testimonials will probably be more valuable for timeliness than because it would to actually, you know, impacts for each of these, what I think is 11 bullet points? These bullet points there, that would take a lot of interviews with the different individuals who needed to be, let's, or reached out to the Equity Board for these particular initiatives and, and workloads.
Yeah, it does. I think there's, I think the, the good medium push is how to, is Kelly's point is well made is how do we build into our, we're going to be looking at our work plan in a second. We're going to be advising on a lot of items over the course of this year. How do we set the expectation that as follow-up from engaging with the Equity Board is for that group to articulate the impact that coming here has had on the work that they're doing.
Or knowing.
Yeah, or if it did. Yeah. Yeah. So it sounds like maybe the, the, the near-term edit maybe for this particular report is my following up with Ray about some testimonials on some of the events. But moving forward, what we want to do is ensure that there's a cycle of us also getting feedback on our impact from the folks that we engage with over the course of the upcoming year. Other, other thoughts or, that was a great push, Tony. I really appreciate that. Other thoughts on this at this point? Ray's already looking at his work plan, so. Okay. Thank you. I'll move forward with, I'll follow up with you, but I'll move forward with those very, very small edits. That way we can get this to city council and continue to move forward on our 2024 work. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for drafting this up, Dale.
Yes. A lot of really good stuff happens in those weeks that no one's in office except for me.
Okay. So now we are on to the work plan discussion and approval. And I'll pass it back over to you, Dale.
Wow. What a night. What a marathon of talking. And I'll try to keep my comments brief here as I want to make as much space for conversation. But I do think it's helpful to perhaps start with a little bit of discussion of where, where did this work plan document come from? It looks different maybe than the work plan documents this group has worked with previously. And I wanted to provide a little bit of context. And so as part of our city approach to ensuring that we are setting our boards and commissions up for success and ensuring that we're, we're making sure not only that the work that you all are engaged in is meaningful, but that we've established enough time to do that meaningful work while also doing some of the administrative things that we as a board will engage in every year. We've, we did a little, our city clerks did a little bit of a scouring of the way different cities structure their boards' work plans. And so we brought a bunch of examples together. We looked at all of them. And then we made some modifications to something we thought was both appropriate. Well, I would say appropriately rigorous. It was both a, a level up from our previous plans, which none of them really looked the same. Some of them were just calendars with lists. Some of them were really exciting ideas, but those ideas and those pieces of work item weren't actually mapped onto when we were going to do it. And so it meant that work wasn't necessarily being pursued. And, or it was being pushed aside for other items. And so the attempt with this year's work plan, and we're one of just a few boards that are really piloting using this work plan, is an attempt to meet in the middle there, to provide some structure and some clarity on what we're going to be doing. To also, as you'll notice in the template on the front page, there's a row where it actually, I think it's the, it's column three that says, Boards Role. So delineating between the things that we advise on as a board and the things that we might drive or take a little bit greater ownership over. Also, I think that it's important to, you'll notice on the flip side, the non-front page, there are administrative items and then potential future items. If you looked deeply and closely, you'd also notice there were some typos in the future item section. Don't, don't worry, we are not going to be working. I think there was a lot about transportation expertise that we are not going to be engaged in. We will have an opportunity this year to weigh in on our transportation-related development around potential future light rail, but that, that should not be conflated with Equity Action Plan being only about transportation. That was a mistake on my part. But really delineating our work into our work plan items, our administrative items, and then also leaving room for any potential future items that we want to make sure we're not losing sight of. And then actually mapping those, not only in a month by month, but also within each month, what does our meeting look like? And knowing far out in advance what items we're going to be engaging with, with each meeting. You'll also notice, and then I'll, I'll hush up here in a moment, that we've held some big chunks of time and some agendas to make sure that we have board-protected time to work on whatever, whatever we sort of start to come to today in terms of a consensus on what we're working towards. More on the ownership side rather than on the advising side, we want to make sure we have core work time set aside as a board. If we don't give ourselves that time, no matter how excited we might be about an idea, as we've learned, as I've learned, staff is hungry to come to this board. They will fill our agendas very quickly. And so if there's something that, that this group really wants to pursue more deeply, and we want to make sure we have work time for it, like to prioritize having that board-protected time to do that. So that's the long and short of the changes you might be seeing in this work plan. Maybe you're all like, we didn't even look at a work plan next or last year. I have no idea. This could be, this could be not as monumental a shift as I'm anticipating it is. But it definitely is something new that we're working on with a number of our boards and commissions. So you're not alone in that. But we're excited to be trying this out a little bit. And the clerk's office is going to ask us at the middle of the year and the end of the year, is this, is this leading to us feeling as though we have a bit more control and agency over the direction of our time? So enough from me. I'll put a little pin in over here and I think turn it over to Priti to talk about what that, the items on the, on the actual work plan in particular.
Okay. Well, I think, let me take a peek here. I, I actually spent most of my time thinking about the first item that you'll see on the Boards Role is we would be owning it. So I do want to spend a lot of time talking through that and seeing what you all think about it. And that the, the item is called Prepare for Community-Wide Equity Assessment and Readiness. The, pretty much all of the other items in the first section, we would be advising on. So I think it would be other, you know, program staff coming here to advise on their, how they've been using the equity framework. So that, which is the third one. So if I skip to the second one, it's Strategic Plan Adjustment. And so this is come, come this fall. Yeah, the, the city would be updating its strategic plan. And so we have an opportunity to provide some input on what those changes might be coming in the fall. So there'll, there'll be some agenda time for that item. And then again, this ongoing kind of sessions with program staff on how they've been piloting the equity framework and hopefully building in some feedback on what changes they might make because of using the framework. We have talked, I think a couple of times over last year around using, and I think Connie Marsh or one of our community members brought this up too, like, let, let's start, you know, kind of coming up with a more common set of words and definitions to describe things so we can get better in, in our language and how we talk about things and kind of share that vocabulary, maybe words to use, words not to use, things like that. And we would be advising on that. I'm not sure who's on point, who owns that. Is it Dale? Thank you, Dale.
Me. As a member of our internal equity team, I'm going to be leading a subcommittee that will be working on developing that sort of, whether we call it glossary terms, dictionary of terms. And the hope with that, and when we bring it back probably more than once to this group, is that it's, it's an internal and an external tool. We've gotten a lot. We have a lot of staff members within the city that are seeing a need to build greater understanding of certain terms within the policy documents that they're drafting. We experienced that when David Reedy came to us with the Sustainable Purchasing Plan. That's just one example. And so we're looking to develop glossary, a dictionary that can be used to create common language among our staff in the policymaking process. And so that when those words show up in policies across the city, people have an understanding of what that means. So that, that will definitely come probably in Q2 year. Also, if I, can I make one? I realize there's one thing I had, had an update on this week that I wanted to share with this group first. That Strategic Plan Adjustment is moving up in the year. So it's actually going to be earlier in the year. And there will potentially be an ask for, the, the mayor is going to be putting out an ask, but there will likely be an ask for a representative from this group in particular to be in that, in that task force. So keep ears open. And I, I of course will bring the news as soon as I've got the news to this group as well.
I'm attached.
Oh, great.
But I don't know if I can, I'm gone.
All right. So I will keep moving us down. The next item that we would be advising on is the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion in Belonging Training for Board and Commission Members. There's a sense that we all across the boards and commissions could benefit from more training around these topics. Then, you know, one of the topics from last month that would possibly be coming back, I guess I don't see where it might land on.
If it does, it will be towards the end of the year.
To test out or to hear about how it's been implemented and seeing if there's any more adjustments.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great. And then advising on community events, so a sustainable approach. I believe was this something that was going to like a request for proposals process to have more outside organizations?
The city is, yeah, is exploring our position in supporting events for the community and whether or not, sort of what, what the city's best role is. And so that's something our Human Services Team is thinking about right now. Is it us leading from the front? Is it us, is it us sort of going through a grant-making process for community organizations to be able to have space and funding to lead something that is meaningful and authentic to them? And so I know that team is exploring that and they've expressed an interest in coming to this group for feedback and input. I'm not exactly sure, and they're not exactly quite sure yet when in the year they're going to do that. So it would probably be the second half of the year. But that's something that we know is going to fall at some point. And it's going to be an opportunity for us to, to weigh in on the implications of that. Yeah.
Okay. So I know before we move into the next section, which is the administrative items, and I know I have, again, I've skipped the first topic because I want to save more of our time for a deep discussion there. Wanting to see if folks have any questions or comments on items two and further in the green section.
This is Ray. I have a question on the Strategic Plan Adjustment. So let me just make sure I understand what's being asked of us. Because I looked at the strategic plan that was created, and this is, sorry fellow board members, but this is like the snippet Dale of that. So if they're asking us to apply an equity lens on these items, would it be wise for us, and I can understand where equity would, where an equity lens would be needed for things like mobility and, and social and economic vitality. But for the other ones like infrastructure, are they, is that group who's creating that part of the work plan looking for us to say, what are we missing here as far as an equity perspective? Is that what they're looking for?
It's going to be a little different than that. So that I, I, we don't have a, I don't have a hundred percent clarity yet on exactly the mayor's charge. And so I'll hold off. I don't want to speak for her. The, the idea though, I know for a fact is not a wholesale change. The, I would imagine that the goal areas and the goals are likely not changing very much. But when you dive beneath that plan on a page and look at the objectives and the actions and the measures, I would imagine there are some, well, first of all, there are some things that we've done. You know, this is, it was always the plan to revisit this plan five years later or four years later. And so there are some things that if, as you look at objective and actions, we've accomplished those objectives and we've done those actions. And so there are some things that it's a matter of simply saying something else should be here now that we've done this thing. But we'll be waiting for a little bit of, we'll need a little bit of clarity from her on exactly what the ask is. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there'll be more time later if anything comes up. But just then rolling down to the, the orange section, which is administrative items. And I, this is mostly related to kind of the board, the cycle of board membership and when those different. and when those different times come up over the calendar year. So the work plan approval, talking about, and Dale mentioned this earlier, the recruitment of new board members and some terms are ending, so talking about that. Welcoming new board members, election of officers, completing the board report. And then full circle back to the, the following year's work plan. So any questions there or comments? Okay. And then the future potential work plan items. So what, so it says Issaquah Equity Action Plan. And this is somewhat tied to the one, the first item that I haven't discussed yet. So maybe we can go back up there and it will kind of flow back into that item in blue. And so if we, okay, so it's talking about the community wide equity assessment and readiness. And we've, we've kind of talked around this topic a little bit, I think over maybe in the fall, over our, our board meetings where we're trying to start thinking about what kind of community engagement we want to do to one end and things like that. And so we've been kind of thinking about what, what would the purpose of the engagement be? And there's one of the attachments that we have in here is it's called an Equity Change Framework. And so maybe one of those that she can share it on the screen. But just for some context, in, in the city, they, they have been doing a lot of work to make progress in equity. There's been internal work, there's been trainings, the establishment of the Equity Board, the Equity Framework. And these, these pieces, if we're trying to make sense out of all of those things, there's, there's actually a big report in this Equity Change Framework.
Yep, 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 yep.
So the framework kind of talks about like for, for a local government organization, how to start bringing about transformation for equity. And so there's been, you know, different, you know, practitioners as well as academics have been thinking about this. And so this is a framework that we think has some good value for us to think about.
Pulling up the other one.
Okay.
So that looks similar but different.
Yeah, there's a slightly different version of this from the report that cited below. And it, it talks about kind of more stepwise, what you could be doing or what a jurisdiction could do. And so the, so according to this change management framework, the first thing you should do, which is phase one, is vision setting, thinking about a vision and engaging with community, you know, to help set that vision. And so it seems like we have, there's not really a vision statement for equity in the city yet. We don't have some of these big like vision statement, a mission, a value statement or any high level like policy framework someplace to really help kind of guide what the work is. But we know like there's, there's been some phase two work done, like trainings and our equity framework set of questions. So that's been in place, piloting the equity framework. There's an internal equity team, there's the Equity Board. So some of that infrastructure has been in place. And then lastly, like I know some, some city staff have been to conferences and working with outside, you know, groups like governing, yeah, what is that?
Here. Accountability.
Racial equity.
Racial equity.
It's, it's an organization that supports a lot of government work to build that racial equity. So there's been bits and pieces, but we, we're kind of as a city missing that first piece around vision aid. And in, in order to come up with like a vision statement, we really need to know what the community's appetite is. How far, you know, do, does the city, folks who live in the city, how far do they want to go with equity? And that helps kind of set the framework for how far, you know, equity really did strategic plan or how we embed equity in different, you know, like the Issaquah, the city strategic plan and things like that. So, so the idea here around this, let me forget what it's called again. The community wide equity assessment and readiness would help us understand what is the community ready and wanting around equity so that we can put the other pieces in place. And so it could help us answer questions like, who do we want to center equity related work on? Which groups should be prioritized in this process? Which places, you know, if there's, you know, geographic inequities, which places to prioritize? What policy areas do we want to center on? Is it health related things or, you know, what are the things, you know, the different main, you know, services the city provides? And which ones do we want to prioritize? So the, you know, doing some kind of equity assessment and readiness with community engagement can help us understand those things. And then we can get more focused on training, skills and tools and how to pilot the work. Once we know what those priorities might be for the community. Then the city, you know, elected officials and leaders can help move those things into place. So, so this is kind of some of the context for what could be guiding the community engagement. And so you'll see on the work plan, it's actually, it goes through August. So this is some of that board protected time on the agenda would be for us to really think about it. What are the questions we would want? So I think the way we are seeing it is that we should help direct this work, this community engagement, but not necessarily be so hands on in doing it. So then in that sense, what we could be doing for the first few months is to think about what are the questions we want to answer? Where do we want the engagement to happen? Which groups do we want to prioritize for the engagement? And then we could try to, you know, put it into a proposal that, you know, and run it past the mayor and council as needed. And then probably take it out as a request for proposals and get a consultant to help actually do it. And then I think this is an opportunity for us to sit in, observe, you know, you know, set the stage for some of this work. So that's kind of the, the intention behind that. And it, to me, it would help kind of fill the, the missing pieces of what we have in place. And we give the other stuff that has already been put into motion, more directed focus in what we would prioritize. And so all of this, so we would come up with a proposal that helps us identify a scope of work for a consultant that directs us towards some visioning, mission statement, maybe going down into what are the policy priorities, you know, demographic groups, you know, particular focus. Other, you know, other things like that to really kind of start guiding how we want equity work to look like in the city. And then the action plan component would be to take the, those elements and figure out where, you know, which, which policy area, program areas, you know, there's a lot of different strategic plans in place. So which ones should there be more concerted effort to embed equity in? So not necessarily coming up with an equity strategic plan that's a standalone, but maybe kind of thinking about whether there's an opportunity for us to embed equity actions into
Yeah.
everything, you know, or focused prioritized. So, so that's the pitch here. I wanted to see if folks had questions, comments, thoughts about how that would go. Tony, so you have your hand up?
I do. First of all, I wanted to say fantastic that the city is actually applying organizational change management to equity. I'd just love to see that. I didn't think that that was happening. So I'm really, really excited and glad to see that happening. Not to steal your thunder, Ray, but I think maybe our next question for our next meeting, the, we all have a vision, I think, for an equity oriented vision, like whatever, would, like if I met someone at my favorite Safeway and they asked about the Equity Board, I'd have my 30 second pitch about the Equity Board. I, I think that maybe should be our next possible, you know, when we get together, our next question. Like what is our individual vision for equity? And then I think we definitely need to come up with, what does that mean? Cause I don't know if we actually have put that forward as an Equity Board, as a cohesive body. What is our equity oriented vision?
Not to steal your thunder, Ray. You can also have your question and we can, we have board protected time where we can engage in that conversation.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
Definitely. A clarifying question for the group. Tony, have we finished? Was that your question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
I just want to again clarify, so this, the policies and practice in each phase has an equity lens to it. But again, how, how this, this is us saying, can you, team that's handling mobility, team that's handling infrastructure, be aware of these phases and can you incorporate them into the discussions that you're having for your work plan for 2024?
I would frame it up a different way. So this, this framework on the screen is how to go about having, creating an equity centered organization effectively. So, so what it's saying is like, what is as a city, what is our vision for equity? And that requires, so developing a, a vision statement would also require us engaging, I don't want to use that word, but partners in the community to, to get to a collective vision of equity. So we don't really have that, we don't understand what that is. We've not articulated that for the city.
That's the need for.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would be like doing the community engagement to really understand what are the community's priorities around equity in terms of populations, policy areas, geography, things like that. And some broad policy statements. So I would say like, I work for a jurisdiction that has equity related values. We have pro equity actions, we have policies. And so that empowers staff to do a lot. Like we have a policy that's called targeted universalism, where we have a universal goal for something, but different groups have different, have made different progress towards that goal. So we're, the policy kind of allows us to have different strategies for different groups to reach a universal goal. Or, and so we also have a pro equity action where we're supposed to disrupt business as usual and replace it with something better. So doing things like that gives us, empowers us to change without having to seek like approval for everything. And so if we had some of those vision statements and values and policies, that would make it, give staff a clearer roadmap to do their work without having to get approval for every little step. So, so that's kind of the, the, I think the motivation here. So having a collective vision for the work, so everyone kind of knows if I do this, this is the support of the vision. And so it gives focus. Yeah.
So, so this Kelly, so going back to what you're asking, would the vision feel in center?
We are in the center. It's one of those things that I was thinking about that too. Cause it has, like, I'm, I'm assuming this is checking these, these groups as they develop their plans. So if the team that's working on infrastructure needs to understand that they also need to consider the environment, the, and equity is in there as well. So they're, they have those checkpoints as they create their work plan. But I guess my, she, um, pretty answered my question is what are we asking them to incorporate in their planning as far as an equity lens? And we don't know the types of questions yet to, to present to them. That's the need for.
Well, and I would, I would say like, so the strategic plan is, it's already been established, right? And so the question is like, if, if we know from the community, well, gosh, equity is super important. Like I think, or like you said something about transportation, right? So mobility, yeah, so if we hear that that's the community priority, then we would, you know, want the mobility team to be focused a little bit more on what does it mean to increase access and things like that. So it just helps give it focus because we know that that's a particular area of interest for the community.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just missing that. What does the community want so we can push, you know, that agenda forward?
I'm, I'm gonna say, I am very familiar.
Okay.
It's a big poster right next to my desk.
I guess one of the things I noticed is like the city has salmon values, but there's no E in the salmon, so like.
Or I would even say like, what's the, what's the understanding of what each of those, the articulation of each of those values through the lenses? Cause I think like each of those values, this is coming from an organization that used to be like very obsessed with our core values and would very, build them out very deeply. So you really understood what it meant to be acting with, through the lens of those core values. But I've always found so interesting about ours is they're really in that nascent stage of they have, they have names. You know, each of the, each of the letters does mean something, but we haven't actually really articulated beyond that what it means. Like what does mastering communication mean? And what does it mean to master communication through a lens of equity? But I would even say like, we could even think about it that way too. Is equity its own freestanding value or is equity something through which we think about all of those values? Yeah. So I think that's a great example of, as Preeti pointed out, without this like clear equity oriented vision, like getting the city closer to that will help, will kind of trickle down to all the other work that then happens.
So I would say the work for our board, if folks approve this work plan and the work plan item, would be to help come up with the, the scope of work for a consultant to do that engagement to support some of this. And then once we kind of understand what the community wishes with respect to equity, then we can start kind of piecing it out, making recommendations for the action plan. So we want to support these areas of the strategic plan specifically. Or we want to bring back the community engagement toolkit and highlight certain things. It'll help kind of pinpoint areas of focus more.
I can like send it to you email or like, one of them was like how to like prioritize outreach and underrepresented communities or like using diverse channels. So I was just going to do like, I think it was like on the Issaquah page, like a 35 page of work plan document or something. But there's some few ideas that I can email that I think may like go through with that circle of all those things. But are we looking more towards like creating a mission statement for the Equity Board? Or how we want to like put equity within those.
I would say, if you're asking me, I think it's a vision statement for the cities. Yeah, and then other, you know, programs, departments within the city would align their work to move towards that vision that the city has for equity.
But to follow up on you, as soon as you said it, I thought, but of course it aligns what we do. And therefore we are going, we should do it.
Yeah.
Right, it's like natural.
Yeah.
Do you want to share some of what you know? I mean, we got, we got, we got time.
Those are two that I see. And then also like considering partnerships with local community organizations to broaden our outreach. And I think just one thing within communication standards that I didn't really notice was on there was like how to implement language access services for non English speakers. I think one of the members like talked about it two meetings ago.
Yeah.
Quite in depth within her school. This is just something.
Yeah.
Fantastic. And I think like those are all the considerations, I think, for, for a lot of the work across the city. But also as we think about a community engagement plan specific for this work. Yeah. To make it language access, use other modes of communication, other channels to brew people in, meet them where they are. Yeah.
That's like specific, that's specific language that could go on a scope of work very easily. More what we'd expect from anyone that we bring in to help consult with the city on that work. Yeah, I love that.
So other thoughts?
Yeah, I have a question that connects to maybe a few different things that have been said so far. How is the board or the city use data driven approaches specifically for equity in the past? If they have been used? And if not, do we have ideas that we want to explore them?
Yeah, I can answer that question as, as probably best as anyone can. This would be my one area of like actually being the expert for Issaquah. I would say it's, I would say we're really good at using data to understand the equitable or inequitable impact of some of our work. I would say we're really good at using data to understand the equitable or inequitable impact of some of our work in some parts of our city, and we're not as good in other parts. So I think we have some teams that are really good at defining what does either equitable impact or equitable access look like? Unsurprisingly, most likely to this group, our human services team does a very good job with this and is very, um, yeah, there's a lot of data to understand, um, both along the lines of, I mean, along the lines of race, gender, sexual orientation, um, language, and I think of a few others that are within within what they, within some of their, their data collection model. They're really great. They do a great job. They really understand who they're serving and are really targeting certain groups. There are a few other work groups that I think do a really excellent job as well. We've just, this year, adopted a data standard for demographic and geographic data. So understand, so any survey that we now do within different departments, there are required optional demographic and geographic questions so that we can have a better understanding of who's, you know, who's answering the question, who's engaging with the survey. That's new this year. So recreation just started using it this past year in a couple of places. But I think, as we, even I would say as this group has experienced, as we've asked groups that have come here, well, you know, where's the data on, you know, who you're serving and who you're missing, there's just been a big gap. There's been a, like, we don't know answer, or an anecdotally, we think it's this. And so a first step, one that we're already sort of drive, I'm, I'm driving, as I work with everyone as they work on surveys, is being able to answer that, even those questions better, around like, who are we serving? Who are we getting, who know, who's accessing our services? Because we can't even really talk about the impact of some of our efforts, because we don't necessarily know for certain, um, who we're serving. So that's a, it's kind of a sad expert answer, but that's sort of the, we're still in the nascent stages of even having complete data to be able to do the analytics and understand, um, yeah, and understand the impacts.
Well, thanks. Yeah, and a follow up on that is, how are these surveys conducted? Is it like you go to a link and fill out something online, or it's a paper form, or is it some sort of more engaged way, or?
It depends on the survey, and so I think this is something that we could talk about with, and I think you make a really good point around what's the, what's the vehicle or the mode of, of both? I, well, I would also then say getting information, but then also making sure we, that that information is shared. Like, I think there's a real habit of gathering and not necessarily turning around and making sure that the community also sees the data themselves aggregated afterwards to be like, oh, I did that survey and here's how, like, I remember saying that I didn't like that, but wow, 75% of people said they did. The, there are a few different surveys, really none of them except for the biennial community survey are done paper. That's the only one that gets mailed out. Everything else is really moved digitally, which of course we know is limiting for folks that aren't active digitally, and then once you get into the digital space, okay, that offers language access. But I would say like, those are probably the two big things. Some of them, they'll go out in a newsletter. Um, some of them will get linked on Facebook, um, or promoted on Facebook. Uh, and then some of them will be QR codes. I don't know, if anyone goes to the farmer's market, there was a farmer's market survey this year. Um, that was done largely through a QR code. Yeah. Yeah, so that's like one of the examples of one of the few, um, surveys. And then I would say another thing is a lot of the surveys that go out are very specific to a project. Um, and I think that's a challenge too. There's probably more surveying happening than any one of us knows. Um, but it's happening if you're, um, you know, already clued into Green ISACU stuff, or if you're already clued into some sort of transportation newsletter. Um, so there's, there's that too, that is a little bit, um, difficult to parse out. I couldn't tell you on, have to defer to communications. They have a better idea of exactly how many. Uh, but I'd say the large, the largest portion of them are online, probably sent through our newsletters. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's something to think about for sure. How do we get the word out?
So any other questions, comments related to the community wide equity assessment and readiness? Work plan item, which we would own, okay, approve it? It's still a little vague. It'll take shape if, as we talk more about it, if it moves forward.
Well, can I just make a comment? Because this is one of the things that I know I've been very vocal about, which is you, you, we can only assume things here when we're in the room. Uh, there really has to be that action of hearing from others. Are you experiencing, um, inequities in your business, in your, is your child bringing it forward to you? I mean, I want to hear from these people, and then we develop action around that. We need examples to show that there is a need for a, a, an equity framework, and this is why. It's, it's, people are, are experiencing inequality out there. So that's why I think, um, that's why I'm very excited about that first one. It's like putting some real drivers into that. What exactly are we going to do as a board to, to bring that forward?
Okay, um, so there are two sub-questions under that first item. One is, do we have the appetite for this? And the other question was, do we need to do, oh, sorry, I'm not remembering this. What do we need to do to move the, the community into readiness for this? And whether we need to have a planning subcommittee to help kind of do some in between monthly meeting work? I guess, I'm hearing that there is appetite for this. Maybe anyone who objects? Um, because this, this will take a lot of time. So any objections to this first work plan item? All right, so I'm going to assume there is appetite for this. Okay. And then, um, even though we do have protected agenda time, um, I still feel like we might need a planning subcommittee to ensure that goes forward. Um, do we need to move to make that, or second, what's the, what's the process for that?
I don't entirely know if you need to make a move. I don't know if you need to make a motion for a subcommittee, to be honest.
Say, he wants to be on a subcommittee?
Yay, yeah. And if it turns out we have to do it again next month, we'll do it again next month.
I believe you do need, we do, we do need to make that official vote.
Thank goodness. Thank you, Lucretia.
All right, um, how do I do that? Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion for a subcommittee, a planning subcommittee? Okay, we do, do we need a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Why not?
All right, so we have a motion and a second to get a subcommittee going for planning. Uh, who would like to support this beyond the subcommittee? We can get four folks? Ray, Lucretia? I'm gonna put my hand up.
And you don't need four folks, you just need, you can't have any more than.
Okay, so we have three. Anyone else interested?
And we're also missing Lorna this evening, so.
Okay, so.
I, I'll, I'll, I want to make sure Lorna, if Lorna wants to be in.
Okay.
But if not, then.
And also Christina, I sent, I think, sent a message saying she needed to leave early, so she can't really apply on this.
Oh, great.
Okay, so we might.
I will follow up with the two of them to gauge their interest, and if both of them differ, Kelly, I'll, I'll reach out to you.
Okay. And then, so I think we've got some, um, a path for the, the work plan item that we would own, and the rest of them are advising or administrative tasks. So I guess as folks look across the collective work plan, any comments, concerns, um, before we move towards a decision on approving? Or is, do they have order?
No, that should be, that should be fine. We'll, we'll do a motion for that. I will add one thing that's not in here. You know, classic, adding something that's not in the plan, right, and they're sitting down to approve it. I just spoke today to our interim finance director, um, who's also our deputy city administrator. And one of her first initiatives now in this interim finance director role is she would like our budget team to take a look at what it would look like to budget through the lens of equity for the 25, 26 biennial budget. So I know one of the things that this group has talked about a great deal has been, what does, you know, what are those cross cutting items? So even if we're on a longer timeline for some of what we've talked about with this preparing for community wide equity readiness assessment, there, there will be a nearer term, um, team that's exploring sort of a, one of the most fundamental, um, parts of our, of how we do business, which is our budget. And what would it look like to take equity into consideration and putting that together, the 25, 26 budget together? So that will come to us likely August, September, uh, maybe even before that. Uh, so that will just, that will be added in here as well. Um, that just came to me as she was walking out of the building at 5:15 this evening. So, uh, it did not make it into the packet, but it will make it into the revised, um, work plan that will be in our packet next month, so. And I'm happy to take questions on that. I don't have much more than that as I, you're the late breaking.
I'm, I'll just make a comment, this Kelly, the budget is the value thing. It comes down to the budget, that it always does. So that is huge. It is a shot, sign of huge commitment from the city.
And, and our deputy city administrator, interim finance director will also be, um, taking a greater role, leading our internal equity team in the upcoming year. And so as we've talked about my role with the board, sitting in the executive, um, her role also clearly the executive. So just to, just to, to mirror back to you all, as we've talked about the exec's greater commitment to centering, um, equity in our work, that's your, that's a manifestation of that commitment. So we haven't talked about it a ton, because we've got so much else to do as a group. Um, yeah, but wanted to share that as well.
Yeah, sorry, I had to add more work on our work plan, but I don't know if I missed it, uh, maybe it was there further down the list, but is, is there any intention of trying to provide guidelines or frameworks for how we create these data systems that was on phase three of the? That feels, I'm personally excited about that. And you talked about data driven healthcare, you talked about what the community, I think you had a recognition.
Great.
Yeah.
I can piggyback Carthick's, because I was thinking about data, and then that item with the, um, the training. What, what, what was the outcome of the training that already occurred? Did that just get, uh, with, with, um, Ken and Kelly, Ray, we all participated in that, so was there data sets and things or feedback that people got that would help us drive some of our planning, drive some of our planning?
That's a great question. Um, I'm likely going to be working with the clerks on whatever that board and commission number training looks like. I have to admit to you that it is probably a month and a half out from what I'm currently thinking about. So we'll have more then. My understanding is that we did not gather any sort of data or feedback on, on that at the time.
Yeah.
But it's a good thing to think about as we move forward.
I remember being asked a lot of questions, so I thought if she was packaging those in some way, that, that, and it was my understanding that she, she was educating all commissions and boards across the cities, so I'm very curious about anything that came out of that, perceptions, yeah.
Yeah, I need to do a bit more research myself on that. And then of course, you know, we've seen a lot of change in the membership of our boards and commissions even since then. So this is, and we all deal with as we think about our organizations, and you do training, you know, you do training once, and that's wholly insufficient for many reasons, but it's especially insufficient as the membership of that team changes. So, um, even if we did it and it was responsive at the time to the input, uh, we've got new people in place now, so, yeah. But I'll add that to my list of, my list of questions as I explore that a little bit.
So Carthick, I don't know if you were suggesting, I think you were, that there's some sort of data systems, data tool topic to be discussed?
Yeah, and, and also maybe broadly like guidelines on how data is acquired and processed with an equity lens on it. So how would we recommend to the city or to other sectors on how they acquire data to understand how inequitable systems are? Um, and maybe we could test that out ourselves too.
Interesting, Dale's taking good notes, too.
Yeah, I was thinking in particular about that third phase of the three or the four phases that was around data systems and tools.
Yep, definitely pull that back up briefly so that it's on the public record what we were talking about as we talk about it here for a second. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. And we might find that that's part of, you might find that that's part of the, the, maybe it's not quite to the scope of work. I'm just thinking about like where that falls. But I know, Carthick, I know personally it's something I'm thinking about. Just given the fact that I'm in charge of our data. So.
That would be really interesting to scope off, because I think there's like community data, like the needs assessment stuff, but there's also performance data.
Work for this group, yeah.
Okay, any other, uh, work plan questions, comments, concerns? Right, should, do we feel ready to, uh, make a votes on the work plan though? What do you think, Dale? Is that, okay?
Yeah. Somebody else has to make it.
Ray's making a motion.
I'll second.
Do you adopt the work plan?
With the additions, with the additions that we discussed.
Okay, so writing a motion to approve the work plan with the additions discussed, Carthick seconded it. So is it approved? Or what they?
Yes, you don't, you don't.
Yes, Tony?
I was just voting, actually, I was just voting.
With this group, you don't, you don't need to vote, vote, like not everyone needs to say yay, but, but you need to make sure that no one objects.
Are there any objections to the work plan with the additions proposed?
Okay.
Good. Nice. And we have four minutes left to spare. Okay, so let's continue on with our agenda. Thanks for all that discussion. It looks like we're moving into adjournment time. Um, I'm still relying on the script. Okay. Ah, so the next meeting is currently scheduled for, and I don't even have the data. What's the first Wednesday of February?
February 7.
February, okay, so the next meeting is scheduled for February 7th, 2024. And I adjourn this meeting at 7:56 PM. Have a lovely evening and thank you all for your active participation and engagement today.
Thank you.
Have a great evening, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. Bye bye.